Chris tried to explain it to me, but it sounded like my fault. The burial thing passed. Just the head re-voted.
I can't even work on this.
I have his whole case.
Chris, go ahead and start figuring out.
Alright, welcome to the town acting standing board meeting for April 18, 2024 at 6:00 PM. We'll stand our pledge.
I am the United States of America, with your power, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Someone designated an alternate. We have enough board members, but we didn't have any here. Often it is named Roger. Would you like to walk into the board?
Thank you.
Did everybody get a chance to read the minutes? I think it's only Pat right here.
Only two people.
Yeah, that's the way Chris.
Off the table. Yeah. Alright, table those. Next meeting. Old business, none. Uh, new business. Harold Stanwood, 384 East Shore Drive, tax map 149 lot 047, application for best practical estate. Go on. You trying to still draw that up, Jason? You want to just tell us what you hear?
We just want to put a little addition so he can have a office so when he's in the summertime, he can go there and move his stuff there and do his work at his place.
So your name is Brian Bedard?
Yes.
Okay.
If you guys look at the numbers, well, so there's a few documents in here that I included. So this, the previous owner has already come in front of the board. So this camp currently sits on peers, uh, came in front of the board for best practical estate, or finally called the best practical location. Uh, it was granted, um, where it sat. Um, there is a copy of the minutes in there. And, uh, so I, we ran some numbers. They are over on their lock calculations. Uh, their lock calculation was at, uh, around 26%. Uh, so in order to do this addition, he's, right now, um, he's eliminating the patio of 320 square feet. Would the, if he puts the addition on, he'll go down to 24%.
That patio, you're going to do?
Yes, that, that's all gone.
And it looked bad?
There is a survey site plan in there from the, the previous one that was, uh, that was done.
No, it's been in my mind.
And the addition is going on the back side of the bump out. Or proposing on the back side of the bump out, excuse me. It did include a copy of the set they gave this package to. Uh, I do think it was replaced. I did copy one to myself. I think it states it was replaced in 2010.
No, we just want to get those last two variables, you know, played over the time now, so.
Okay, so just tell us a little bit about what happened to the building in 2016 when he came in the first time.
That's a different one.
Yeah, it was a different one.
Right, same building, you know?
Same building.
Correct, so you're only allowed to do 30%.
He only, they only put peers under.
No, I'm...
I, I just know what the app, he doesn't know.
Oh, you can tell me without.
So, yeah, they put, they put foundation under. This is a completely, you think?
He's a new person.
He doesn't know that happened in 2016. So they came in just to put, uh, uh, to set peers under the house. Um, that was it. There was no expansion.
So the building was replaced?
Nothing was replaced. They just put in a new structural supports and new camp.
What was underneath the floor?
Just all concrete cinder blocks and, uh...
Doesn't appear to match what I'm watching.
Yeah, because the patio is not in there. Right?
Well, there's a patio, but this, this is a, uh...
It shows a deck which was removed. This is just a skirt wall, if that's what you're wondering. You can't see it, but I mean, you know, that's, that's fine siding. Yep.
Go back to the previous picture.
Sure.
So that patio would be here on this?
That patio, I don't think was there. Maybe someone stuck it in there. So they, they paved right up to the door. Um, that patio was, it was there. They put in their septic back here. There's pavement all the way to the door. Someone, don't know if they stuck it in there. I have no clue. Um, I don't have a permit in there, but it doesn't show it on this thing whether they had it there or not. I don't know.
Is that part of the calculation?
But they're removing it completely. Yes, it was part of the original calculations that, um, he ran and provided me with. And then removing that brings them down.
So they had concrete blocks under the 2016, then it went to? Peers?
Yeah.
Sonotus?
Yeah.
So they replaced?
I don't know.
So they did a replacement?
Yes. Applying to construct support under the existing structure.
And the new office is 168 square feet?
Yes.
And they getting rid of that patio's 320? Supposed to... Is some of the driveway coming out? What makes the 320 that's coming out?
16 by 20 coming out.
Patio?
Yeah, yes.
Which is the scum we're looking at in this picture?
Yeah, where the chairs are.
Yep.
And that little platform right there to get to the tire.
Which is on the left of the screen?
Right there, yes. It's just a piece of wood, you know, it's a decking on top.
Oh, I see. So in the dark area, that's asphalt?
Yes.
Okay.
And that addition, but also the old peers, um, because that's what it's currently sitting on.
Yeah, that's what threw me off on my initial picture.
Right. Were you saying that this drawing here is not to scale?
No, I just drew it.
Yeah, well, it's, um... Yeah. Not scale.
How far out is that room gonna come?
It's gonna be exact as far out as that 14, where that window is right there that you see.
Under the cooker, it'll come to that?
It's gonna, no, it's gonna come in, in between where that stack pipe is on the roof. That's a little bit... Yeah, ring, ring about there. That's where it's gonna come.
12 feet.
12 feet out from that corner to the end of that.
And then the patio area will be?
Grass.
Grass?
Yes.
Are you seeing the, uh, the pervy surface calculation from where?
Yeah, it was in there.
It was in there?
Yes.
Good as they have.
It's gone from 0.6 to 24.
Okay.
Oh, that's the old. That's the new one, isn't it?
This is the one from 2016.
This is the new one.
What are you guys?
It's proposed.
Wait, there should be nothing in there for 2016 other than the, the minutes.
That's my goal.
Probably have the whole application for 2016.
No, I only gave you the minutes from 2016.
You did. Now, what's the front side look like? How well the education is, uh? Oh, it's fairly steep.
Yeah, it looks like it's a lot of pine spills and, and like it's hard, it's hard to even see it on my computer. So I can't really even tell you. It just, it doesn't, there's no... It's just natural. It's just kind of natural. It doesn't look sand. It's like a mix of sand and peat. It's a mulch.
Can we get it up on Google Earth, or?
You won't get to the Google Earth with the trees.
Well, on the shoreline there, I want to see what the, uh, that gravel area looks like on Google Earth.
It's not letting you get really deep.
Hmm. Yeah, that's...
It's just, and then when I go in, the search turns into a blur.
We've done better than that before.
Yeah.
That's a pretty rough guy.
Yeah, it's...
Well, it's not too bad. Which water is it?
It is this one right here.
Yeah.
I mean, now it looks like the docks are on there. You know, there's no docks in there. It's just all, uh...
Yeah.
This is where the hillside was right here, and then it comes down to just a beach.
Yeah. Alright, well... Yeah, that's a good...
Let's see if I can...
It looks, it looks very barren down there. I wouldn't mind getting York County store of the waters there. Get a revegetation plant in the shore area. It looks pretty loose. Seems like the plant's pretty good, but I'd like to see some vegetation something to, uh, help us out. Jason, you know where the, um, patio that was removed in 2016 was located?
Must be right in front of that house.
Oh, it's, uh...
Yeah.
There will be no tree removal, and if the deck is possible, the patio will be removed.
Yeah.
In 2016, what are we talking about?
So, if you, you know, like there was a large deck.
Could that possibly be the, the slate area that we saw? Are we calling that patio? Patio is usually block, you know?
I'm, I'm assuming that was the patio that you were talking about that never got retaken out.
How about the?
But that's, I mean, that's an egress. I can't imagine that's, they come to that.
So then it could have been a deck off of there?
It could have been. It could have been a deck, and then they just turned it into a landing with stairs.
That's ridiculous. That doesn't make a lot of sense.
No, it did to me, and unfortunately, I wasn't part of that one. And all I had is the minutes.
I know. I was hoping it could be application or something to look at it. I just want to make sure we're not, you know, that we haven't too, uh... The process too thoroughly the first time, you know, as we go through it the second time. We're really only...
You mean you don't remember 2016 when you were on this one?
I might if I have a dog. No, I don't. I don't remember. I've done hundreds of these things.
Yeah, right.
It's fairly straightforward that we just, you know, you're doing a replacement condition somewhere else.
It just needed, what they went in for is it needed to be re-supported. That's really, and then...
I'm okay with that. I think we should just get a revegetation plant here and roll with it. I'm okay with the proposal. What's everything?
Yeah, that's okay.
Uh, sure. You are currently 51 from the water?
So it's not, we're not going any closer than the pre-existing structure. I mean, you can use the 51.
I'm still gonna put in a motion. Since there is a deck in the front that's closer than the 51, which must be that stairway, correct? On this map right here? So that's closer than the 51, so the 51 is not even right. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the best practical location for Harold Stanwood, 3840 Store Drive, tax map 149 lot 47. That the, uh... The addition be, uh, completed, that the building, uh, not be increased in conformity. And that a revegetation plant for the site is established with a qualified profession.
We'll discuss that. Do you guys want to see a copy of that at a later time?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to see better picture of the lot, too, but...
One second, then. All I can do? All I can do?
So you are voting tonight, so you have to?
I am.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Really?
It's a desert.
No, you did, right?
No, I didn't. It didn't designate at all.
Should do an hour.
Well, there's one, two, three, four, five. We might as well.
Alright, well, you can be a voting number tonight.
Don't you think?
I don't know. It's like in the roll before all the time, so...
No, when there's not enough, Chris, you have to, yeah.
There is enough to roll.
Well, no. We, we fill it up to five.
Oh, okay. Well, then we'll...
Right.
Roger.
So we have to do them again?
Sure. You already have the motion. You can just re-vote it. You don't have to redo the motion.
I, I don't hate it. Alright, five.
Okay.
Just because we, if you, if you don't vote, you have to explain why. You have to say, I mean...
I thought you designated.
I thought you did.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Alright, next up, Mark Boise, 109 yards, 7999, 109 tax map 241, lot 0...
Sorry, guys.
Application for subdivision.
Pass those out.
Subdivision.
Long story short, we bought our 40 acres, uh... It was already divided. There was, uh, 200 acre lawn or something. It was already divided. And part of our property has a two acre separate parcel on it, which you'll see in the map. And the engineers drew up, uh, an entrance from our 40 acres, which is now 20 acres, to get to that two acre parcel. Without knowing if somebody would put a driveway in there for the 40 acres first, which is what we did. So it, you can't get to the two acres from the road because it's too dangerous. So, uh, the engineers built this road based on DOT, uh, while this is cut in. And we bought all of that. We, obviously, we put it in our own place. We're all set up there now. And then we sold the two acres this past year. And they went and did the lines just so they can see what they own. And the driveway, based on the original map, was past our gate. So thi- this is only about moving it so that it's, it's not past our gate. It totally is.
The one on the screen is the one that was approved in August when he came in for the re-subdivision. The one in front of you is what they're just, they just changed the art.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, so, so I don't, I don't want to move my gate.
Pretty, pretty much, uh, just so there's no confusion between the two property owners. If he sells, right now, the driveway is coming in on his other side of his gate. So he's trying to move it that about 10 feet. Uh, and the, the, uh, surveyors want to register this so that it's locked in, but they can't, they won't register without the actual change, to be mean.
So it's been, it's been staked. The survey crew came out and staked, staked the new one. Once you guys okay it, then we'll have our end taken care of with the deeds and everything with lawyers to make sure it's all...
It's, it really, it's changing, like, if you look at this, this is a 40 acre parcel, so I mean, it's changing like 10 feet. If, uh, I'm on the shit.
It's actually six.
See, that one's almost the rim.
Yeah, yeah.
Moves about that corner.
It makes it a little bit more parallel to 109. It helps the, it helps the owners of that property, too, because there's a big rock out there. So by moving the driveway, they don't have to do any blasting. Uh, and that's accidental, but it makes, it's good for them, so...
Just specify exactly where on the map we're talking about.
Oh, right there, yeah.
We're talking about the driveway and the whole nine yards.
Driveway here. So the driveway comes from this two acre parcel of Bullet Farm?
Oh, you're talking about this?
Yes, this right here. And so they had a shared access because it didn't meet the site, the line of sight, according to DOT. So in order to utilize this site, uh, it was approved in the plan to have a shared access, a shared driveway.
It, it didn't show my driveway. It just showed the access to the two acres.
Yeah.
And we put my driveway in prior, so...
And you're looking to move that?
It's just enough to get below my gate, so we don't have to worry about doing anything against my gate. And again, it literally helps him, he doesn't have to blast his driveway because it's an outcropping of rocks. By moving it, it puts him right on the edge, and he should be fine. So what I told...
So what we're looking at is proposed or?
That's the existing. The proposed is in front of you.
You see the straight lines on the, the toes?
So you moved it toward the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, what are the distances with the, uh, road?
Uh, there's still 40 to 50 feet between the road and that, that driveway edge.
Okay, you need to know that distance because you need to keep your vegetation buffer there.
Well, how much is the vegetation buffer supposed to be?
Um, let me look at your plan here. It's usually 40. I don't know if it's gonna be on this one. We might need to plan for the whole nine yards. But I can look it up in the guide.
That is it. Well, that should have everything that the...
That should be duplicated of the whole nine yards plan?
Just with the new, new, uh, driveway.
Okay.
If, if that even affected that distance, it would only be for a few feet up the driveway. Because it works away from Route 109.
It's 25 foot, here is 25 foot vegetated buffer right here.
25?
25.
From the edge of the road? Which number are we?
Uh, nine.
If that's the case, then it's, it's 20.
It's not saying from the road, yeah?
Where are you looking? I, I'm looking at number nine right now. Maximum lock coverage 30%, except that 50% is allowed within 100 feet.
The last lock at nine.
Minimum side, front, and rear setbacks that includes 25 foot vegetated buffer. Minimum side, front, and rear setbacks that includes 25 foot vegetable buffer.
I'm pretty sure that's what we have in the ordinance.
Okay.
So administratively, what action do we take?
You guys have the right to... Huh? This is a minor amendment to the plan, since there's no property lines being moved. The vote, the board doesn't need a public hearing, doesn't need anything. They just decide if they want to vote on it tonight, or if there is any more concerns, they discuss it. But administratively, you guys have the freedom to choose to approve it tonight, or to, whatever you want to do. But it doesn't need a public hearing, it doesn't need, it's a, this is finally, it's considered final revision of subdivision application. Yeah.
Final plan.
Final plan revision.
Final plan, doesn't say revision, it says application.
Yeah. Sorry, so...
Why not just write four?
Well, no, that's the only form I have for final plan. Let me, so, I'll read it to you in two seconds, just give it to me. So revisions to approved plans. All right, so if the revision involves the creation of additional lots or dwelling units, the procedure of preliminary plan approval shall be followed. If the revision involves only modifications to an approved plan, without the creation of additional lots or dwelling units, the procedures for final plan approval shall be followed. So it's final plan, subdivision final plan.
You're reading page 25.
The top of it.
Yeah. Do we have the distances?
All I have is one distance right now, which is, you can see it up in the detail number one on the very top of the page. From, it looks like from the roadside to the beginning of the proposed driveway is 56.24. And then the bottom is 25.67. That's, and that's the detail, the detail from, the previous one was 85. And it was an arc, so, yeah, a little bit different.
Where are you reading that?
So top of the page, so, well, I'm reading two things right now. So the top of the print you're looking, there's a detail. On the left-hand top, John, you'll see a little box.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so you can see the detail, it shows you from the 56.24 is your linear footage from the roadside to the proposed. And then 26 points, 25.67 on the lot.
Yeah.
Is that to the edge of the pavement or to the shoulder?
Shoulder, I'm assuming, just that, wherever the pins are, I want to give that specific. So it looks like...
I measured 40 feet to the road, so you know.
So that's from where the paint is, so it usually includes the 109s and stuff like that, so I don't, you know, whatever, three rods, whatever they want to call the roads. Three rods, excuse me.
John, you have to do this verbiage right here, it says, "Proposed land use, relocation of access road to adjacent property." I feel like it should read, "Relocation of access road leading to adjacent property." Because I feel like it's saying that we're relocating access road to the other property in this statement. Are you satisfied with that statement?
I'm not following what you're...
Right here, it says, "Relocation of access road to adjacent property."
Right.
To me, that's saying that we're relocating the road to the adjacent property. And I just feel like we should add the word "leading" to adjacent property into there.
Maybe.
What do you think?
I think that was, it's two sides of the same coin.
Sufficient, okay.
Because we are, they are relocating that, not a huge amount, but it's...
But they're not relocating it onto the adjacent property, they're relocating the road that's leading to, leading to the adjacent property. Okay, as long as you're happy with it, I want to make sure the board is, because it's...
I am, I...
It's ambiguous verbiage, right?
What do other people think?
I think it's okay.
Okay. All right. I think it looks good. So I'll make a motion, if you'd like, Mr. Chairman. All right, make a motion that we accept the proposed final subdivision plan application revision of Mark Boise, 09 yards, 799, Route 109, tax map 241, lot 6. That the proposed easement be located, relocated no closer than 25.67 feet to the edge of 109 from the shoulder of the easement.
One second.
Should it be the edge of 109, just a question? Should it be between this property line?
I'm pretty sure it's the edge of 109, but...
You could always just be simplified and just go with the amendment of 4-2 of 2024. I'm not going to take the measure, it's a, this is a stamped plan, they can't really change it, really.
Well, I feel it's important to think that the 25.67 feet is to the shoulder of the easement as opposed to the edge of pavement.
I think they're going with property lines there, not 109 or the shoulder. I think it should always say property line.
Further away.
Because that's, they're surveying property, it's not, they're not...
All right. I'll make a motion that we accept the application for a final subdivision plan revision of Mark Boise, 09 yards, 799, Route 109, tax map 241, lot 6. And the easement to the neighboring lot be relocated according to the details located on their plan. I mean, what's the name of the plan here?
Bullitt Farm Estates.
Yeah, the plan, Bullitt Farm Estates. Revising lot 2A for the whole nine yards.
Second.
One second.
On paper.
Am I going to get one? Yeah. Looking at one, you're going to go register for the 30 days, and then...
Sign one over?
Let me know when you register. Let me know when you register, so I can, I'll go on their registry and print up a copy for myself and attach it to the one on the right side.
Do they give it a new number at the registry?
Yes, you'll get a whole booking page.
That's right, you got the subdivision here.
Yeah, so I think last time I had somebody who would say it takes 24 hours to get the booking page, but I don't know if we'll have that. Just let me know when you do it, and then I'll, I should be upset. Don't fold it, they won't accept it if it's folded, just...
Not your first time.
Yeah, just keep it rolling.
Sunset, yeah, not going for sunset. Yeah, somebody... They're making a whole new fairground out there. This made me think, I was just remembering the parking lot that were putting in the fairgrounds.
Yeah, I just see that they kind of have access road, to actually connect that. It's also a parking lot, but it seems to be ongoing. Yeah.
Yeah, we should revisit that, that looks real.
It's a wild one, yeah.
The fairgrounds?
Yeah. Is that good enough?
All right, next up is Adam Pelletier, Fairgrounds Variety Store, 631, Route 109, tax map 241, lot 006-001, pre-application conference.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Ramzel, I'm a civil engineer with the Vago Technics, and I'm here with Adam Musa Pelletier of E&amp;E Holdings LLC. So we're here tonight just to present a new project. It's a variety store and gas station that was proposed on the corner of Route 109 and Milton Mills. We're looking for some initial feedback from the board. We're at the point where we're ready to move into engineering and design and submit, close to submitting to DEP and the DOT for the project. So there are some unclear standards within the ordinance, things that we're looking for clarity on, or things that are in kind of conflict with each other. So we just want to make, and they could need big changes for the project. So we'd like to present those this evening after I describe the project, and then answer any questions that you guys may have. So we're proposing a 6,000 square foot building. This will be split between a variety store, or convenience store, and a drive-through coffee shop. Coffee shop will be about 1,000 square feet of the total 6,000. We provided access to the site from Route 109, as well as from Milton Mills, with the main entrance being off of Route 109, or that's what we're envisioning, that that would be used more because it's the better traffic, or more well-trafficked road. So you would enter the site, Jason, if you don't mind just pulling up the site plan. There it is. So you would enter the site from Route 109, essentially, drive in. We're proposing a shared entrance with any future development that could be happening on the northern portion of the subject parcel.
It's the eclipse.
And to get to the building, you'd take an immediate left, or you could continue straight to get to the drive-through window, which will be on the rear of the building, if the front is allowed to be, facing Route 109. We've provided 25 parking spaces in front of the building. And we had to propose quite a bit of impervious area because we're anticipating a large number of tractor-trailer trucks that would be coming to use the diesel fuel pumps, which are shown kind of at the bottom of the site, that 750 square foot white box, as well as being able to accommodate trucks or passenger cars that are towing boats, given this is in the lakes region and we expect a lot of traffic from people enjoying the lakes in the summertime. As far as the gas station goes, we're proposing four pumps, each with two fueling positions. So there's a total of eight gasoline fueling positions and four diesel fueling positions.
Could I ask you why you say you anticipate a lot of tractor-trailers?
Just because of the, the Route 109 is a trucking route, and there's not, other gas stations in the area don't have a lot of space for you to be able to pull in and get gas with a truck of that size. So we wanted to make sure that we could accommodate that on the site. We would do that even if there weren't a lot of tractor-trailer truck traffic. I mean, the site should be designed to accommodate large vehicles in any capacity. We're also showing a dumpster location on this plan, pretty close to the building where the coffee shop and the variety store will be. That's kind of to, in the center of the long gas station canopy and the 6,000 square foot building. We will add a screened fence and plantings around that. I know people like to see those screened. We've also proposed two different areas for stormwater retention. As I said, we haven't moved into engineering design on this yet, so they're kind of general in nature. We're anticipating like two underdrain soil filters for treatment and detention. in nature, we're anticipating like two under-drained soil filters for treatment and detention. But we're at about, we're over one acre of impervious and under three acres of impervious right now, so we, at this point, be required to submit a stormwater management law permit through the DEP. As far as utilities go, we have subsurface septic system, two of them that would be proposed under the parking lot in front of the store. We'd like to keep the septic wastewater separate, the coffee shop wastewater separate from the variety store. Coffee shops can, they have a lot of, use a lot of cream and grease, and so that will probably have a more robust septic system. We'll probably propose a grinder of some sort and an oil-water separator, I'd imagine that the variety store would also have an oil-water separator, but we'll fill out all the proper forms when we provide an actual application and work with Jason to make sure that he has what he needs from that respect, but they would be chamber systems as they're under impervious areas, so they need to be each twenty loading rated. And lastly, for utilities, we, or second to last, I should say, we have a well that we'll be proposing. Under state standards, when you have over, I think it's twenty eight people that you're serving greater than sixty days of the year, it's considered a public water supply, so that's regulated by the state of Maine Drinking Water Program. That just means that there will be testing once a year or maybe every six months, that has to be submitted to the state to make sure that the quality of the water is still adequate, and there's testing that will occur prior to actually getting a permit for that. Just one other thing on the well is that it has a greater setback, a public water supply has a greater setback from septic than a traditional well, which is usually a hundred feet, that well will be about three hundred feet away from any septic fields that we're proposing. And the last utility that we'd be extending publicly is power, so we'll either come off from, off of route one oh nine, or come in from Milton Mills, and that would all be coordinated with CMP. And the last thing as far as site design goes would be lighting, I wanted to mention. We have not proposed any lighting locations on this plan, but we will, we'll likely put wall packs on the building over entrances, and then there'll probably be some overhead lighting associated with the fueling canopies, and then we'll have pole lights to make up any other lighting that's needed in other areas, specifically in the parking lot, just to make sure that that's well lit and safe for people to be visiting at night. If you could pause and answer questions from here, or if you'd like the four different items that we needed clarification on from the ordinance, I could duck into those as well.
Are those spelled out in the packet?
They are, they're right on the, they start on the second page of the letter.
Okay. Starting with design of drive-through facilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you go through those, that would be great.
Sure. So the standard for this states that no drive-through facility shall be located in the area of the site adjacent to a residential use or residential zone. So drive-throughs aren't allowed use within the commercial zone, but they're not supposed to be adjacent to, on the site, a residential use or zone. The parcel to plan left is rurally zoned, but residential is obviously a use in the rural zone. So the clarification that we're looking for is what is adjacent. We have spent a lot of time, this layout has gone through several renditions, we actually started with the site fully flipped, but in order to accommodate the drive-through on the backside of the building and enough queuing in the drive-through lanes as required by DOT, this truly is the best position for the building on the site. And so, and there's a lot that went into that, and a lot of other standards that we're leaving from that respect, but I just wanted to note that the required vegetated buffer is twenty five feet, as we learned with the last applicant, and we're maintaining right now about a hundred and fifty feet of natural wooded buffer between what would be that residential use on the left side and the drive-through lane of the building. So we are adjacent, but we are pretty far away, and we're leaving more of a buffer than what is required, much more of a buffer.
I think I would have to look that up, that buffer, just to be sure, I'm just doing that from memory.
The buffer standard?
Right.
Sure, yeah, we have it, we have it listed on the plan. It is.
Twenty five feet.
Yeah, it's twenty five feet, I didn't learn it from the last applicant.
Okay.
We verified that.
It was me that.
Well, no, she states the ordinance in her, if you read it, she's kind of.
Section five one 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 six.
Yeah.
Well, that's the design of drive-through facilities, I think the buffering is listed somewhere else, but it is within the zoning, the commercial A-zone dimensional standards that buffer is listed.
So it says proposed property line, so the lot hasn't been delineated?
Hasn't been divided yet.
Correct.
Should we wait for it to be divided before we proceed?
Did you guys have a purchase and sale agreement or something like that already?
Not yet, but we, this isn't a formal application yet, so I figured that we would have to provide right title interest with the site plan application when it's submitted, and we will. It will either be a purchase and sale agreement, or the land will have been already divided and sold at that point, so we would be providing a D if that's the case.
So we're gonna have to go through subdivision application as well as.
This is a part of the Willard Farm subdivision.
But they're about to divide the lot.
You're, you can divide a lot every five, one lot every five years.
It's the third lot that triggers subdivision?
Yeah.
And if, so this is two lots?
The lot, the mother lot.
Willard Farm was divided, just look at the plan that we have right here, it's like in the state.
I think it was early two thousands if I remember correctly, this parcel was split off from the parcel from the left, and so it's been longer than five years, so we're allowed to split again without.
I'd like to just double check these numbers.
Yeah, of course.
Just because it says proposed property line, it kind of.
Just because it hasn't been divided yet, so they're kind of talking about.
Yeah.
Right, well, that triggered my first question as to whether it should be divided, you know, or we can just have a stipulation that that's where the property line is gonna go, I guess.
And we state in our letter, like, these technically aren't waivers that we're asking for yet, because right now it's just about.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not quite there yet, but we don't wanna move forward under the impression that you're great with all of this and then have it changed later.
I forget how much feedback we put together with the actual application. Is the, is the drive-through gonna have a microphone system?
Yes, so there is an order board, it's shown right, so there's a no outdoor eating area, and then right under that drive-through, to the right of that, there's a small little rectangle, yep. And I was gonna say as well, that's not set in stone, we could, we could set that further away from the building along the drive-through entrance, kind of in between those two trees that you're seeing composed there, to get it even further away, because that would probably be the biggest source of noise that would affect the residential use.
That's my take on that, sure.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's some room to play with where we put that communication board. I think, the only thing I'll note is that there will probably be some restriction to how far away from the building it can be because of the queuing associated with the cars that are pulling up. We have to be able to accommodate a certain number of cars within that drive-through lane, so if we set that too far away, we won't be in those standards.
And the, just for clarity, what's the black line that cuts through the driveways at the top of the driveway?
That is the proposed property line, so this is what.
This is proposed as well over here?
Yes, that is the proposed.
And this is proposed?
Nope, that's, so the entire.
So this is proposed, okay.
Yeah, just the black dash line across the top is the proposed split, all the other property lines around that make up the mother parcel are existing. And you can see, we, if you look past the rendering, we provided an existing conditions plan, it's split between two sheets, because the parcel's quite large, but you can see, I guess if you use the match line at the top, what the parcel would look like, and actually it's on the plan, Jason, that we were just looking at with the previous applicant.
Okay, it's on, it's on my other disk, I have to flaw out.
Yeah, but you're only seeing about a third, in this view, you're only seeing about a third of the subject parcel.
This is the remainder right here.
Yep, that's the top.
So this is the, this is where the both sites, convenience stores going, and this is the top half of it.
And it abuts the whole nine, the two whole nine yards properties that you were just discussing.
So if I'm looking at this map here, this red lot is seven acres?
No, that red lot is twenty, almost twenty acres.
Twenty acres.
We're on the bottom seven.
So the proposed new lot is seven acres?
Yes.
All right, so we'll figure out what adjacent means. Okay, location of off-street parking.
You wanna move on? I guess the feedback I'm hearing is that maybe the communication board is the, is kind of the noise source that you'd be worried about, so if we can get that as far away from the property line as possible, this might be agreeable?
I don't know if we can really.
Yeah, discuss this project.
Give you that much information right now, we gotta, I mean, we don't have an application in front of us, can only go so far, but.
Yeah.
Well, and we didn't have a chance to look at this beforehand. Yeah. So we haven't, this is all hitting us right now. Yeah, I think we should just go through these.
Sure.
Bullet items and then we'll get, we'll get your advice, but we're gonna need some time.
Yeah, I can work with Jason to, you know, on kind of the nuances. Okay, so the location of off-street parking, Jason, I'm sorry, if we could just scroll back to the plan for the whole thing. So here the standard states that in suburban and rural areas, smaller uses that may need public visibility from the street should be sited as close to the street as possible. In this case, no more than one row of parking shall be allowed between the building and the street, with the balance of the parking located at the side and or rear of the building. Larger scale uses, which do not require visibility from the road, may be located further from the road with a landscape buffer between the building and the street. So there's a lot to unpack there. What, how I interpret this is, and in working in other zones and on other projects in other towns, an urban field has a building very close to the street and they promote parking in the back because they're trying to encourage pedestrian use and easy access from the street with buildings. Here, yes, this is, and I think that this is stated here because this is a commercial district technically, but in our opinion, this is not, this is still a very rural, still has a very rural feel. And so what we're asking is, does it also make sense to the board to have the parking be in the front of the building, kind of in a more traditional way, and have the building be set back further from the road? And I think we fall under a larger scale use, given the amount of development that we're proposing here, but that's kind of up to interpretation because there's no definition of large-scale use in the ordinance. I'll just add to that, that we drew an entire sketch of the parking in the back and the building, the back, that made the back of the building face one oh nine, and the front of the building face the parking, right, because that's where you would enter, and having a drive-through window, it totally, it put the entire drive-through along one oh nine, so the drive-through window was actually facing one oh nine, and people would be entering the store from the back of the building. So it really changed the site, and it kind of the character of the site, and we had a lot more impervious associated with that, with that sketch, I know you can't see it, but we felt that this, this made the most sense, and I think meets the general character of this zone in this area.
I'm not sure why you'd have more impervious, and that if the drive-through was on the one oh nine side, to me that would mitigate the first problem we were worried about.
So if you could picture this site mirrored, the drive-through was on the one oh nine side, but you had, there was no way to come in from one oh nine, you'd have to go all the way around the site as the drive-through's shown now, go around the gas pumps, and then to the, to the front side of the building. There was no way to, basically we were forcing that easy entrance to the drive-through to be from Milton Mills rather than from the route one oh nine side, just from a site circulation standpoint. There is a provision here for what we're trying to do, and that's just interpreting whether or not this is a large-scale use or a small-scale use.
Yeah, I, personally I think it's a wide-scale use, but we'll have to consider it as a board.
Sure.
So this, this here is a vegetated buffer, or is it a stormwater system, or what's that?
That's just a landscaped island, so it will have, it will usually be grass or have plantings of some sort within it. The large circle that you're seeing.
Yeah.
Is stormwater, and then we also have stormwater, yep, down there, adjacent's pointing.
Okay. So did you consider just putting the building closer to the road and having the drive-through closer to the road?
We did, that was the scenario I was just describing, where.
Just kind of move it over, you still have the drive-through on the same side of the building, and the building is kind of where that.
Then your parking would be between the drive-through and the building, I'm sorry, your parking would be on the opposite side, so you'd have a drive-through between your building and your parking. The pedestrians would have to pass.
So you're trying to avoid that?
Right, we're just trying to make it as pedestrian-friendly as possible by, you know, putting your sidewalks around the largest area of parking, which are closest to the building.
Unless you put your parking to the south of the building.
Yes, and then we were running.
Kind of the apartment was in this, the building moved over and the parking was in this area, roughly.
Yeah, we've looked at, oh my gosh, we've drawn, we've drawn this, I think five times, in different scenarios, trying to meet, trying to meet this particular standard, and we ran into, in another scenario, we ran into not having enough queuing in the drive-through, we have to, we have to have space for fifteen cars to pile up, I don't know that Acton Dunkin' Donuts or Roma Joe's will ever see that many cars, who's to say, but that's what's required for DOT. And then in other scenarios, it was impossible to get these large trucks through adequately, and you have to think about kind of those turning movements and how they're gonna approach the pumps, that's why you're seeing so much impervious area around them, because they need to be able, their trucks need to, and axles need to be able to swing properly to line up to the pumps.
Ian, what is, what is this area right here with the hatching, what are these?
Sure, so those are, they're islands, but they're just striped, that way in case you have a very big vehicle that needs to be able to drive over them, they, they're not hitting a curb, popping a curb.
You call it an island, it's just an extension of pavement, correct?
They're paved, but there's, there's a striped island is what we would call that. There's no curb.
So it's just painted, it's not.
It's a pretend island.
That's correct, yep.
Pretend island.
And then the one closest to the building, the striping that you're seeing closest to the building on the other side of the sidewalk, that is for loading and delivery.
Yeah.
For any deliveries to the, to the store or the coffee shop. And then the one to the, to the left that's the largest, that is for, that is for truck turning movements, we had to add that impervious there so that trucks can make a full sweeping movement if they're coming, it's easier for me to point to it, but if they're coming. if they're coming, it's easier for me to point to it, but if they're coming-
If they come from 109, then they want to swing around to pass 109?
That one, or if they're coming in from the other side, and they need to get back through next to the building where those two arrows back and forth are shown.
Oh, you want them to be able to do that?
Yeah.
That's necessary.
It is, yeah, so we created that impervious area there.
So Milton Mills Road entrance, will that be two-way also? I don't see any arrows there.
That's correct, yeah.
Alright.
That leads us to our next, that was a great segue into our next bullet point, which is access into the site. So this standard states where a lot has frontage on two or more streets, which we do, the primary access to and egress from the lot must be provided from the street where there is less potential for traffic congestion and for traffic and pedestrian hazards. Access from other streets may be allowed if it is safe and does not promote short cutting through the site. So for this particular standard, we, this gets a little complicated. There is a future project that will be coming before you on the remainder of the parcel here, just to be transparent. And so in DOT's eyes, this is called common scheme. And when you have two, thank you, when you have two developments that are next to each other that are going to increase traffic on a state group, the DOT has to review them at the same time so that they can tell what this project's going to do to this one, and this one's going to do to that one, and how it's going to affect the traffic as a whole. So what we're proposing here is a shared entrance off of 109, because in the event that we didn't do a shared entrance, we'd have an entrance off of 109, and then the parcel above would have an entrance. So that's two entrances causing congestion. So that's why we proposed it as one shared entrance. We also, the reason we're not proposing this fully off of Milton Mills is because Route 109 is the higher traffic, traffic road, as well as the fact that I can picture many people seeing the gas stations, driving past Milton Mills, and then having to turn around because there's no other entrance off of Route 109. Safety comes into play here as well because of emergency situations. If you're going to have a future development up on the other, yeah, the northern portion of the parcel, and you only have one entrance in and out, then if, in the event of an emergency and something gets blocked, you're not creating a safe situation where people can get out. I think a lot of this will be ironed out with DOT, but I just wanted to mention it is a town standard that the board, of course, has a right to an opinion on.
Right, we read, "Primary access and egress from the lot must be provided from the street where there is less potential for traffic congestion and for traffic and pedestrian hazards."
Right. You could make the argument, though, that by routing everyone to Milton Mills and then turning right onto the site if that were the only entrance, are you creating more hazards? I mean, can that road accommodate the traffic that we may see generated from this development?
Yeah, well, I see it, I see it two ways, kind of. One, I feel like there's less potential for traffic congestion maybe on Milton Mills Road just because the, in terms of the speed, where you have, on 109, you got people turning, and they're going 60 miles an hour, whereas Milton Mills Road, most people, if they're coming toward 109, they're slowing down, hopefully, and stopping. And if they're turning in, they're also going a little bit slower, but at the same time, I see that there is pedestrian traffic from Iron Tails on Milton Mills Road.
Pedestrian traffic in vehicular, if that entrance is there and it's the only entrance, they're going to come out of Iron Tails there, take a left, and then take an immediate right into the site.
Yeah, or I can see people walking from Iron Tails to this facility potentially, which, so I can see congestion problems either way we do it, so we have to kind of hem and haw, I guess.
Yeah, and that, so as part of this project, I should have explained, when I say DOT will review this, this amount of traffic, mostly due to the drive-through facility, will trip a traffic movement permit through the DOT, which is their biggest permit. It's a year-long process. And so it's arguous, we have to do a lot of different studies, traffic counts, and explore off-site mitigation, meaning there may be a slip lane that's added to Route 109 as a result of this project, or the shoulder may have to be widened. We won't know until we go through the process with DOT, but that's kind of where I was, what I was getting at with, I think a lot of this will be ironed out with the state, and we can talk, as we go through that process, we can talk to you all about what we're doing to increase safety if this ends up being an allowed entrance off of 109.
Yeah, I feel that's interesting, where you discussed that DOT would view this project along with the project in the proposed law to the north.
Yep.
And I feel like, you know, the board needs to take that into consideration, that the property line needs to be established before we consider this separately from, you know, we have to think about that.
Certainly, and when we submit a site plan application, that property boundary will be set in stone.
It will, it's going to be-
At least with a purchase and sale agreement. I don't know if the land will already be sold, but a purchase and sale agreement is adequate, right title interest for-
With the D-?
Yep, for the applicant to at least come before you with an application and an We also chose that location, the shared location. DOT tends to prefer that you align with other streets that are across the state route, so that location was chosen because it aligns with 13th, I think it's 13th Street, that's there on the right-hand side of Route 109 in this plan. That kind of like skirts the backside of the Acton Fairgrounds and goes out to the lake. So that was the reason we positioned it there.
So we probably want to get some sign on 109 saying, "Intersection ahead" or something, but right now, I mean, people come out 13th Street, and it can be a little bit surprising, so that's going to become a, or even before Milton Mills and that intersection, you need something telling us that there's-
Definitely.
-busier intersections ahead than there used to be.
Yeah, and DOT reserves the right to dictate all of that. They could drop the speed limit. That might be a solution, which I don't think would hurt, given the Fairgrounds and Iron Tails and all of that. I mean, it's very fast, I think it's 55, but people fly on that hill, 50.
Yeah, they go 60 plus, yeah.
60 plus. I know, I don't see people slow down until they're coming up, you know, near the Acton Trading Post, so it's quick there. Yep, and that's all the off-site mitigation that we'll go through with DOT. So then the last one is parking layout and design. This is really minor, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, to be honest. The standard requires that parking spaces at a 90-degree angle, so your traditional perpendicular parking space, have a stall depth of 24 feet and an aisle width of 26. We're good with a 26-foot aisle, but a 24-foot parking space is six feet longer than a traditional parking space, which is nine by 18. So we're making this request in an effort to just reduce the amount of impervious overall by not having to provide extremely long parking space. I think, and also to note, we, this is drawn with a 20-foot parking space, so the standard not in your ordinance, but a typical parking stall, like I said, was nine by 18. We drew these at nine by 20, so we added two feet, but that additional four feet that's in the standard seems a bit wrong.
Or we could put the parking spaces at 45 instead of, or at an angle as opposed to a 90?
You, yeah, there could be angled parking accommodated if-
Because that would allow it to be a little bit longer.
To be honest, we'd rather just do the 24-foot long stall and keep it as perpendicular. It's just, it's, I mean, I don't know, Jason, from a code perspective, do you see, I'm trying to think of other sites maybe impacting this.
No, but for reality purposes, you're at 45, you're only going in at one direction. You can't come in at two directions. You have to go around the building to get into that 45, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, well, I feel like most people shouldn't be coming off of 109.
I would say the majority of the traffic, the bigger traffic would be off of 109.
And then we should be considering that and thinking about the entrances as we think about the parking layout, for sure, to kind of go hand in hand.
That would, just a note, that would cause, so if we did angled parking with most people coming in from 109, that would mean that somebody coming in from Milton Mills would have to go all the way around and left. We have the space to accommodate the 24-foot parking stall. I just, from a site design standpoint, I've done a lot of these, there's really no need for a 24-foot long space, so that's an opinion, but just something I thought the board could consider.
When you say an 18-foot depth is typical, what is it, what do you point to that says that's typical? Is it some state standard or something else?
Actually, yes, DOT has a standard for parking stall depth that is 18 feet with 90-degree parking, but I would say in other towns that I've worked in, nine by 18 is pretty typical. 20 is probably the longest I've ever seen. And that includes, you know, most of southern, you know, most of southern Maine, that's pretty standard. And I do think a 20-foot, having that extra two feet does make sense in this case, if we propose them at 20 because of trucks and trailers and things of that nature.
Do you want to move it a little while?
Yep, exactly. I don't think that extra two feet hurts. Like I said, four, an extra four beyond that just seems a bit much.
Alright. Jason, this could be a good question for you here, would now, say we get that property, proposed property line established, we have two entrances on that side from the northern property, do we care? In terms of the setback from the property line, you know, usually we have a vegetated buffer or some sort of buffer with the property line, and that, you know, it would make sense that perhaps we would only have the-
So you would say, you're suggesting pushing it more into the other property and keeping a 25-foot buffer to the property line?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm driving at.
So you're saying, what you're trying to say is if you take this-
Just take the property line and move it 100 feet north or 70 feet north or something.
Yeah.
How does that affect the plan?
I can comment on that if you-
Go for it.
So like I said, this is aligned with 13th Street for a reason. I think DOT will require that.
Oh, because it's perpendicular to the 13th Street.
No, I'm not talking about moving the entrance.
You're talking about the lot line.
Well, I think that'd be easier because it's still proposed.
So the problem with that is that the future development that's going to be happening, which we're in the process of designing right now to the north-
Yeah.
-would be affected by that property line because that property line location sets where the building setbacks are.
So you're that far into the design of the other lot?
We're not, we're about at the same place, but we just weren't ready to come to you yet and present it. It will be soon. These projects will probably be running concurrently. I think that will actually avoid confusion when you can look at them both at the same time, but it will be two separate applications, and I can-
You would, you wouldn't want to do it as one planned unit development application?
It's two property, two different property owners.
Not right now.
Not right now, but-
When we submit, it would be.
It will be late.
Okay, so that just goes back to what I was saying, property line, entrances, setback from the property line. How are we going to address that?
So we can do a planted buffer or leave a natural buffer that's 20 feet, 25 feet from that property line where it is, with the exception of the pavement being there, and obviously, an easement over one side of the lot and the other side of the lot would be needed between the two property owners. That needs to be set in stone because they're sharing an entrance that requires maintenance and plumbing. So there would be an easement over the entire width and beyond of the width of the pavement, and then we could propose plantings or leave a wooded buffer along that property line where there is no pavement.
So you're saying you proposed a 25-foot buffer here?
Yep.
And here?
Yep.
How about right here?
Well, that's what we're showing. That's all planted. Yep, that's already a buffer.
This would, we'd be able to somehow moderate this so that there was just one entrance coming through here, and this was vegetated.
Yep, and it's already wooded all the way to the left of the drive-through.
Well, I'm talking about-
Yeah, but that's a drive-through. You're telling, you're saying get right to the drive-through.
We've got three entrances now.
Well, there are two entrances.
Because there becomes a property line, one, two, three entrances. I'm just pointing it out, I'm not trying to get anywhere right now.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Something's going to be discussed.
I think technically access into the site would be two, because you have, that's, access into the site is defined from the public right way, so it's two access points into the site, but we are creating an intersection once you get into the site to go either left or right.
Well, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
I'm just pointing it out.
Yeah, it's something to consider. I mean, the property line is really close to the, if you're exiting the site and you're going to Route 109, the property line is really close to the right side of it, so once this is in CAD and we've got proper plans and we can align it with the surveyed entrance of 13th Street, it might end up that the shared entrance is actually on the property to the north anyway. In which case, I feel actually that that's going to be harder to accommodate a 25-foot buffer on the other side if the driveway's fully along that property line. So it might make sense to put the property line right in the middle of the road, and then you could at least, you know, you'd have 15 feet of pavement on either side of the property line, and then you could plant the other 10 feet. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying.
But understanding that a buffer is required, there's plenty that we can do with buffering, whether we leave it natural or plant it. Your ordinance doesn't have standards that I've found on, like, the density of that buffer. If you're planting it, it doesn't say you need, you know, 15 trees every 200 square feet.
Right, every so number of feet, yeah, no.
So it's kind of, again, that's another point, it's kind of up to interpretation.
What happens is we say, "Don't mow it," and it grows up as it does, that becomes your buffer.
Yeah, or if we're proposing trees-
However they grow is how thick it becomes.
Sure, and if we're proposing trees, we do that with a landscape architect. They can tell you what trees have the best screening abilities. If what your goal is, is to create a true buffer, we can go through all that. It's not a problem.
I'm just pointing out that we've got, I don't know how many feet, at least 50 feet of pavement along the property line on both sides right now, which is, you know, that's all I'm pointing out. Ian, just suggesting that we view this as a planned unit development, looking at both at the same time, because the two developments, so to speak, as you viewed as two, could be viewed as one, Ian, there's the overall effect of the whole area, Ian.
I certainly agree with that. We would not be opposed to that if it applies here, and I can look into the applicability of that for when we submit our actual application. I do think it would be helpful to view these at the same time.
For like stormwater and things like that, because it's hard for me to anticipate what kind of water might be coming down from the upper lot-
Sure.
-which is uphill of this lot, down into this, you know, I feel like the water is going to come down to this lot, and whatever goes on in the lot that is blind to us right now is going to affect this lot, and if we, perhaps we should be considering both at the same time.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, which is why we were designing them concurrently, because one has an effect on the other. The last thing I'll say is, with DEP, we're going to have a sit-down with them pretty soon to go over both projects, as well as with DOT, but from a DEP perspective, they may, even though it will be under different ownership eventually, they probably will view this as common scheme development, which leads to a larger permit if it's slowed up rather than a stormwater management law. So that's kind of, we don't know the answer to that question yet, but I'm just bringing it to your attention, both projects could fall under one permit through the DEP, which I think would be helpful in this situation.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Then you all will understand, once we present a stormwater report, that it encompasses the entire thing.
Yeah. Preferable, actually.
Yeah.
And we'd like to get the aquifer protection district delineated on the map, so that when we're dealing with this, we can be looking at where it is, because I know it is in this general area here where you're proposing this stormwater feature, there is aquifer protection districts here, it kind of goes like this, sort of, and...
We, yeah, we have it on our hands, I don't know why, it's probably just shaded over.
Because I did look at it and it's really, really close, and I wasn't sure if your parking lot was actually cut because it has a little indentation over here, I wasn't sure if your parking lot was because of that.
Well, we had from GIS, just comes around the bottom right here.
Yeah, it's right here, I'll pull it up for you.
Oh, we need to bring it up. Okay, I, yeah, thanks, Jason.
And this is all, like I said before, this is all just a reference tool, it is not accurate, so we'll wait to see what they provide us with, oops, with their overlay, but it is pretty close.
There it is.
It is very close to what they're proposing.
Well, that's even a little bit more than I was thinking.
But that, you got it, that, so the entrance is, this is 13th Street, Gavin, and it's coming in, and their store is here.
Well, sure.
Right, but I'm just saying, let's wait until they give, they provide us with an overlay.
Yeah, well, you can see there that the entrance from Milton Millsworth will be in the aquifer protection district, and that one of their proposed stormwater systems will be in the aquifer protection district, and those gas pumps will be within...
The gas pumps are not.
Within 100 feet of the aquifer protection district, they're gonna be right next to it, so those are all things to take into consideration.
Yeah, I think the standard is that they're not allowed within the aquifer protection district, but they are near it. But also, the aquifer protection district is down, is over, yeah, to the right-hand side. Also, we're showing that stormwater as green space, that may not be the entire, like, the limit of the stormwater basin itself may be smaller than what we're showing in that landscaped area, so it may not be within that line, but we do have that line in CAD that we can provide on our plans, it will be on all of our plans.
Yeah, thank you.
And our well will be located probably up to the left, top-left of the proposed lot.
Kind of where it says convenience store or drive-through.
Yeah, like up in that corner where Jason's pointing, we want to get it 300 feet away from whatever's up there. Oh, I know, I'm still talking with my hands, I'm sorry.
But of course, we want to cite that well in consideration of the development going on in the northern lot, too.
Exactly.
Pushing the well all the way to the property line, we want to know what's going on on the other side of the property.
Yeah, and their septic, like, their septic field, we're gonna want to put on the right-hand side, and the well that's downstream is gonna want to go on the left-hand side.
Yeah, that's why it's kind of, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll get there, we'll provide...
All right, that sounds good.
So, I guess my question is, understanding we don't have an application in yet, how... I realize that an actual assurance of some of these standards that we've talked about tonight can't be given to us right now, but Jason, is it something that you might be able to work with, when you meet with a planner here and there? Have you got interpretation from an outside?
Yeah, I did try to get him down here tonight, but it was actually the last-minute scenario, and then I would definitely, I sent him the plans yesterday, and I think he was out of the office today, and that's why he didn't come. I will hit some, I will, what I'll do is I'll transcribe in a minute and send it to him, so that he has, or telling him to walk from here to here, and give us some feedback on what he's, what he thinks, and just share it with the board, as you know, yourself.
I think we should, before we start wrapping too many hours with the planner, we should either get the property line delineated or get the other development in the plan, so to speak, because we're dealing with half of the plan.
If, I just need to look at if that plan's, I'm sorry, I forget what you noted it as, the planned unit development?
Planned unit development.
If that does apply here, unit being residential?
We got quite a, no, it's commercial or residential, it's where, it's basically, you know, you're putting in power, you're putting in interior road system, and, you know, these facilities that are used by multiple entities.
Sure, okay.
You know, we've got planned unit development, could be a subdivision, or it could be a...
Commercial, yeah.
A mini-mall, so to speak.
Yeah, I just didn't know how it was standing in your...
Well, I can read it to you, it's kind of this long-horned, bloated, catch-all thing.
That's okay, I can look that up on my own time, I'll spare you all. But yeah, if that's the easier way, then we can certainly look into that.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that might be a good thing to consult with North Star on, too, is, shouldn't we be hearing it as one or two applications?
When do you propose doing one of these with the other applicant?
Would you suggest doing a pre-application before?
That way, I can, we can kind of touch on both of them, and I can get them down here, and at the same time, provide the board with some notes of this one, so they know where, they can get up to speed.
Sure, we can make that work for the next agenda, probably.
Okay.
The first Thursday in May.
Yeah, and then, so I'll, let me reach out to the planner first and see what his schedule's like, and I don't think it'll be an issue, but, you know, there's some questions that we want some of his interpretation on, as well as the board is gonna take this home and I'm assuming they're gonna digest a bunch of it.
Yeah, I threw a lot at you.
Yeah, they're gonna really kind of figure out how to move forward with it and come to their own opinions and have discussions on it at the next meeting. Yeah, yeah, like Gavin said, they just kind of got this information, so now that's, they're really gonna kind of look into it.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if both were on the agenda for, I know that maybe there'll be the same application, we actually submitted an application, but if both were on the agenda as separate projects, just to discuss like we did tonight, you could offer your feedback on what we've submitted here once you have time to look into it, that would just be really helpful for us moving forward.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so what I'll do, I'll reach out and hopefully get in touch with him tomorrow, find out if I can temporarily schedule him for the first Thursday in May, and then get him, you know, he won't have, I won't have the video, takes them, I should have it by midweek next week, so hopefully I can get him to review it and then provide us with notes. And I'll email it to you as well as the board and the board, they can come in and grab it, bicycle, whatever they need to do.
Sure.
So that they have a little time to digest what the planner is proposing or interpreting. Because, yeah, it's tough to take in a lot of this information all at once and then to get an answer provided at that meeting.
Yeah, certainly understand. And as you, I think you already know, I did note the sections for each area that we discussed tonight, or...
So I've already emailed, like I said, I already emailed this to him, or emailed it to me today, emailed it today. And so he's gonna review it and give you some notes, and I'll talk to him tomorrow and touch on a bunch of the stuff that was talked about, as well as Gavin's proposal, planned development, planned unit development, or how it is, and what he, his thoughts on that, and if that's the way we should proceed, it makes more sense to do it that way.
Would, with a planned unit development, does it, would it be two permits, technically, because there are two owners?
I actually don't know, I couldn't tell you that answer, wish I could, but it's happened right now. I've actually never been part of one, so... But, either a purchase and sale agreement would be good, you know, just so that then they can, I guess, visualize the delineation of the both properties, or, I know, whatever. Or something in that fact, but both, I don't know if the other applicant will be present and, or it's just gonna be you?
I imagine the other applicant will be present, what did you say the meeting date was, the first Thursday in May, what's the date?
I think it's the 4th or the 5th.
Okay, I think the owner is on, is gone till the end of April, is what he said.
Yep.
So he should be back by then.
Yes.
But we might need a little bit of time to...
So it's the 2nd, so, I mean, even if we temporarily schedule it for the 16th, you guys said you, the proposed application isn't gonna be ready until June sometime?
Right.
Like, for early, right?
Yeah, we need, I mean, we have to go through full engineering design on this, so...
So, while we'll touch base, the board will do their own work anyway of what they have, and then I'll let you know, and you let me know if the 2nd works for you, and I'll know if the 2nd works for the planner. If we need another couple, two weeks, then...
Okay.
Does that, either one work for you, or is it for coming in for the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think the owner would be fine with me representing even if he can't make it, but my only issue is that are you going to require, given that we still don't have an actual application in, are you gonna require that a purchase and sale agreement be, I mean, I would consider that a requirement of the application, not having another discussion about this, so I don't know that we can get a purchase and sale agreement done by May 2nd. But I would like to come before you on May 2nd if I could, just to kind of keep the process going, keep it fresh in your minds. Again, your feedback determines how we move forward, so the longer it takes, you know.
Yeah.
So is this considered a pre-application?
Pre-application conference, yeah.
So we can, we can, it's a conference today?
Yeah.
But without, I remember another instance in which we were told that we had to have an application, an actual application, before we could even consider it. There was one that we looked at that we should not have considered, and I think that you'll remember.
Oh, I do, yeah, absolutely, but...
Did you have a vote that evening?
No, there was no vote.
I mean, isn't that kind of the purpose of the...
Well, we're not making any decisions tonight, but it's hard to know how... How solid the advice we give you tonight can be, can be, I mean, you know, it says planned unit development, land under unified management, doesn't say anything about ownership, so, I mean, I can tell you that.
Yeah, yeah, I think it sounds like Jason wants an opinion as well from outside party, and that's, that's fine.
Yeah, we can talk generally, but specifically, I think that's where we get in trouble.
Yeah, and that's fine, I think even just the conversations that we've had tonight, I'm hearing some of what your concerns may be moving forward, and that's all we really needed, so, appreciate it.
So, Pat, to answer your question, it just says no decision on the substance of the plan shall be made at the pre-application conference.
No decision.
It's just a discussion, this is our project, how would you like us to move forward with it? Any questions or concerns that the board has, so that they can address them beforehand instead of last minute, oh yeah, that type of scenario, or...
It says no decision.
No decision.
Make some suggestions, get some advice.
No, but just kind of like what you guys have done tonight right now is really what helped, detailed some on...
All right, well, thank you all, have a nice day.
Thank you.
I moved over your journalist, Jim, in a second.
My second.
On favor? How did that community go for both of them?
So, yeah, they both passed, the deck area one was the closest.
Yeah, you wanna shut that off?